The last H-Conf meeting and there will not be an H-Conf meeting in September. I'll write back information in November after the October meeting.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, it's been, you know, summertime, so a lot of the meetings are being pushed to the fall, so. All right, so that is our committee assignment. So next up is our staff report.
I will turn it over to Lieutenant McCall. This is the call.
Hi, good evening. Glad to be here. Sorry, I've missed the last couple of these as I think with some trainings and vacations and such, so. Glad to be able to get in here tonight. Our typical stats that now get sent out usually each month by our administrative secretary. And what I most commonly report out on, unfortunately, we're short staffed and records, just like most other places. And she's been assigned a couple of days a week helping out at our main station. So she did not have those stats completed for the month of August. But in looking at the base numbers that she did have in there altogether. It looked like calls for service in general in the in the greater Trinidad area and obviously the city itself. Were down by about twenty-five or so calls from the previous month. But a couple of the felony investigations and misdemeanor investigations, those numbers were up a little bit. From the previous month. With that being said, in reviewing of the stats that are limited to the. Within the city limits of Trinidad itself for the month of August. Looks like we had a total of forty-two calls that were inside the city limits. Almost, almost half of those were transfers to other agencies, so that would be things like. You know, a medical aid or something like that that comes into our dispatch and then gets transferred off to to medical or fire. There were seventeen of those for the month of August. We had three patrol checks, three dispatch reports, a dispatch report typically being something that's not. At least on face value criminal, but and it's not something that somebody's necessarily wanting a deputy for, but they want it just documented in the system that they're calling about it. So there was three of those. Three logged Trinidad patrols, just designated as people that had put themselves out there patrolling around, which obviously is. Not the limited number of times that there was actually deputies in Trinidad, but. Just those those that were logged under that that call type. And a couple of agency assists, a couple of welfare check calls. And then the rest of the call types reported in here were were one each of just things like noise complaints. One-one missed dial, abandoned vehicle, alarm call, one burglary call. One foot patrol, one intoxicated subject, one suspicious person call, one vandalism and one vehicle investigation. And that pretty much rounds out the. Call volume and type that was logged for the month of August within the city limits itself. And then for what it's worth on there, as those are stats are combined and put out, it looks like Thursday and Friday were typically the busiest days of the week by incident count. With the early afternoon hours being the busier time of day. Or or our end at least, that is.
Was the drop in crime month over month, was that unique to Trinidad or do you know Lieutenant McCall was at all? What county that the crime stats kind of went down?
You know, I don't know because I I haven't looked at the other stats for the other areas. As far as those numbers. I'm trying to remember from looking, I did look at Blue Lakes yesterday. And I'm trying to remember now, I'm pretty sure their overall call for service was down a little bit as well, not quite as as didn't see quite the. Drop. I think that Trinidad did. But theirs was down a little bit as well, but yeah, I've not actually compared that to any of the other stats for the month to see if that was a. Trend everywhere for the most part, or if it was a little more specific to to your guys' area.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's interesting about Blue Lake, so.
Can I interrupt with a quick question? Is Officer McCall going to be on the whole meeting or is he just giving his report and leaving? Because I have one of the like the items that I need to bring up.
Is is related to law enforcement?
Yes, he's only here right now for.
Could I address him?
Yes, it's it's in that we finish with the council, then we turn it to the public, yes.
Okay, so I will make sure that we give you an opportunity to ask your questions.
Right, I had two items that are not related to each other.
Okay.
One was definitely I would like to help the sheriff's improve.
Okay, so we'll finish first with any council questions and then go to members of the public and then we'll go to the staff report so that we can make sure that we accommodate that, so. Any questions, other questions from council? Okay, thank you, Lieutenant McCall. It sounds like we also have a question from a member of the public or two comments or questions, so if I can ask you to come up to the podium, please, so. Everyone online can hear you, that would be great.
Hi, yeah, I'm Don Allen. I live in West Haven. And I'm on the board of the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. So we received, we, our interim executive director received a call from a member of the public. About some behavior at Baker Beach. It's not the first time we have gotten calls similar to this, but the behavior reported is extremely disturbing. It's mood behavior amongst a group of men, I will leave it at that. These are men that are in the mood. And participating in acts that shouldn't be done in public and. So I didn't have direct experience with this event that happened just within the last couple of weeks, but the person who contacted us. Seemed to be indicating that the sheriff's department was not interested and would not come and do anything. You know, so as a land trust, you know, we don't want that kind of behavior happening on our property. We've talked about maybe just posting the. The Public Resources Code that would that might cover that kind of behavior. But, you know, it's a little bit awkward when you're putting a sign out in public, you know, trying to tell people not to do something that they should have a common sense to not do anyway, so. I don't know if a report was filed with the sheriff's department. But, you know, from past experience, what we've heard is that unless the sheriff happens to be in town and happens to be able to respond, and they may not even want to respond because it's Baker Beach, you know. Gotta see, fail and all that kind of stuff, but anyway, we're kind of at a loss as to what to do. We've also been told that there's kind of one person who stands like a security guard at the top of the trail and tries to prevent people from going down there, so anyway. I just want to want to bring that to the attention.
And the person who's standing at the top of the trail, just for clarification, this is not someone who's, they're not trying to help, they're someone.
They are trying to prevent people from going down there and disturbing men's activity.
Activity?
Yes.
Well, I know you have two items. Shall we let, shall we have Lieutenant McCall maybe respond to that and then?
Yes, if you would mind, thank you.
Lieutenant McCall, do you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, so this is the the first that I've heard of that, or at least of that type of, you know, alleged activity occurring at the beach. And it kind of sounds like this is, from what I'm gathering here, if I didn't misunderstand, it sounds like this has been more than a single occurrence. Is that accurate from what you understand at least?
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, if there's people, I mean, I know that, you know, the, the. You know, sometimes we have areas like that where nudity or whatever is is allowed or or kind of happenstance. In general, if we, but obviously, if we could get into the realm of of, you know, acts that are occurring that are lewd, then that kind of changes the game, obviously. You know, my suggestion obviously is, yeah, call or encourage people to call when that's happening. Obviously, if they have somebody looking out up there, they know they're calling, sometimes it may be difficult if we get there and they're gone, but. You know, if we can, you know. Have an idea when it's occurring, I understand the belief that sometimes if there's other in-progress calls going on, it may may slow us down on when we can get there. And, you know, and getting there in a timely fashion to where maybe they're still there and then this is occurring, but, you know, it's like anything else, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so. If, you know, the more that people, when they they see that type of thing going on, are encouraged to to call it in. Just it's helpful for us that it shows that, hey, we have this issue here, this was not just a one-off incident. And and we need to, you know, do what we can to try and and curb this. So I don't know if there seems to be a time of the day or day of the week, if this is, you know, with what kind of frequency this may be occurring. But that that type of information that kind of can help us narrow down our enforcement is obviously always is always helpful as well.
Yeah, I I do know that it happens during the day, during, you know, the sunny part of the day, the warm part of the day. I don't know the frequency, but this is probably at least the third incident I've heard of in the last couple of years. Yeah, so should we call the dispatch number, like the four-four-one number in Eureka? I mean, it didn't seem like. Might not be appropriate for a nine eleven call, but just period, what's the best way to contact the sheriff's department?
Yeah, I mean, something like that where there's typically, we, you know, we. Try and discourage within reason if it's not something that seems like some kind of immediate immediate threat to life or property. To try and call the the public number just to keep from from, you know, nine-one-one lines being being burdened down with too many nine-one-one calls if it's not like an in-progress emergency. Obviously, it's one of those things, if people are having a hard time getting through and there's something going on right then and they call that way, our dispatch will usually just have them transfer over to another line so that it doesn't do it, so. But yes, calling the Eureka office is going to be the best, while during the daytime, we typically would have an administrative secretary at the McKinneyville Station and she can create that call for service. As I was mentioning earlier in the meeting, due to our our record staffing. You know, our, she is a couple of days a week now working at a main station, so on those days, there's not going to be any staff. That's at least going to be guaranteed to be there and regularly answering the the phone, so calling the Eureka office is the best way to ensure that you're actually going to get a hold of. You know, a live person to to take that call, not end up having to leave a message or something like that, which could potentially end up not getting checked for a day, depending on on when it comes in.
Okay, and you, what we are planning on doing is just posting the number. And just saying something to the effect of, you know, if we see any. Not sure if we figured out the wording, but any behavior that's inappropriate, I'm going to call Sheriff's Office.
Is there, is there any advantage, Lieutenant McCall, for enforcement to having signs posted? But I know in the past, like some of the things that we've had in the city, it's been suggested that we have signs so that then law enforcement can say. They are enforcing a code or a sign, you know, a noticed issue.
Well, and I'd love to hear from Officer McCall too, but the the person who notified us about the complaint, they gave us the. The panel section code. That that we could post there and, you know, just say that this kind of behavior is. And and if you see behavior like this, call this number. Apparently, there was a sign. But they're not necessarily with the board approval, but it basically was encouraging respectful behavior among members of the beach community. You know, with a recognition that it's considered a clothing optional beach, but that doesn't. Doesn't necessarily translate into good behavior, so anyway. That's the kind of our plan right now is to put up a sign with that code section on it and a number to call if people see that, because, you know, I see families there all the time and. Yeah, I would be quite bothered to know that that was happening, but my kids were down there, you know. If any, it's just not, so thank you, Officer McCall. Thank you for allowing me that and I'll wait till you might be on the second.
Okay, so do you want to, did you have another question for Lieutenant McCall? Items for the floor, okay, we'll get to that in just a sec. Thank you very much.
And Lieutenant McCall, is there anything else that you needed to add, otherwise I'll go to my staff here.
No, nothing else that I can that I can think of, sir.
Thank you for joining us, we appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so regarding the staff activity report, which is included in the packet. First item was regarding the bandwidth trail, which the Coastal Commission heard on September sixth in Eureka. The commission did not find a substantial issue to reopen the trail at this time, however, they have given us six months. To six additional months to address trail closure and try to find if there is a way to reopen. They have a. On Monday. The city planner, the city engineer, so. Planning. Meeting. Coastal Commission. Perketa office. Coming up, probably next week. Also. The insurance company has reassessed the condition of the trail at the August twenty-second. I'm sorry, on the twenty-second, myself, the representative from Sira, had at the trail. And we talked about the current trail close signs. They suggested keep those in place to the trail's existing condition. Depending on any potential improvements, the trail could be reopened if it's determined to be safe. In the future. And there's water rate study, which we have gotten Rural Community Assistance Corporation, RCA-C. In order to provide a water rate analysis for us. This is done through USDA funding, so it's not costing the city. Enterprise fund. The study. Gabe has prepared this, Gabe is our contact point. RCA-C because they're asking for a number of records from. And as a result, Gabe has been gathering all that information and providing it to the. And they'd like to see it ideally by September fifteenth. And in here, Gabe has also indicated that the. Water based study report date and then also the capital improvement. Plan and five-year budget. And then deliverables that they have. So when it is on our end, September fifteenth. The other point is to conduct a painting process. If you have any access to that, no. So Ben had mentioned Lethal Falls Creek, said that we have the flow measurement to report at this meeting. Yesterday at about four thirty, I got the number. RCA. Measurement of the flow in Lethal Falls Creek. And it was point seven eight eight CFS. At point eight six CFS, we are to report to. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, so this is the first time it came down below. As a result, I did call. We have from the Department of Fish and Wildlife today, I got a voicemail, sent a message. And asked them to call me back. Which probably called. Faces that are outside themselves, sir. So additionally that regarding this particular item. We have the water shortage contingency plan that was prepared by the city. Couple of years ago in twenty twenty-one. And technically, since we're under point eight six, we fall under stage two. And under stage two is a water shortage warning. And as we saw, what we have done in the past, in the past, is that we requested that homeowners. Try not to water their lawn if they, you know. If nothing else, at least to cut back on the water. And then also try not to wash the car. During this period of stage two. Additionally, that is recommended, this is one of our restaurant owners here, that when water is being requested, that you could provide it in the restaurant. But only upon request and not automatically place it. So those are measures we will be taking, so ideally what we'll do is post it on our website and also send a letter to the residents. Notifying. Stand.
I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure.
You said, since the last time this happened, when was the last?
In twenty twenty. So in twenty twenty, we did reach the stage two. And that time, Richard Plomp, this was on our council. And he had prepared, he volunteered to prepare the the cards and the stickers, so there's a sticker that we would send like on the water bill, notify. What stage we're in. So. We have the the water billing, we're still halfway through. This is like. Either a letter or a card. Just so the stage two, you know, that we're suggesting they cut back on. Cards and at the same time to like the.
Yeah, I think maybe the communication, you know, we can do a banner on the website as well now because we have that new functionality. And just let people know that we really are in a situation at stage two where. I mean, we we actually called it mandatory restrictions, so it's it's actually pretty serious, so I think we need to just make it clear that. You know, it's not like we're going to go around and police people, but it's, you know, we're we're below the threshold. You know, whereby we have to report to fish and wildlife and my understanding is we get to a certain point and we're not supposed to take any more water, but. We probably would never be held to that hopefully, but. Yeah.
Yeah, fortunately, that number has been to point one five. And we've. We've never gone down below point five that I'm aware of. And one of the things to let the community knows is that number one, we would like to get voluntary cooperation. As much as possible from the community before we have to require people. But on the other hand, generally speaking, the base flow in the creek is significant enough that fortunately we're able to ride through. Any pass issues that we got into the creek.
It seems to give, I would be interested in the last time when it happened, so maybe we can work with that, but. Because it's in September now, so.
It it happens every year at this time, virtually. Last year was was strange because we had a lot of rain in April and May.
Yeah.
And June even, but since I've been paying attention, it's every year at this time. September and October are months that we need to kind of be more aware of.
I just, it happened this early in September, so, okay.
Well.
At least at this time, I agree, yeah. Pretty regular thing, but now we start worrying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think.
This year was really like.
Yeah, exactly. This year it happened a little bit earlier than than last year. We were hoping after all the rain got in December.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because there's no drought declared at this point. Usually when this happens, there's a drought, you know, level as well, so.
Well, maybe our creek is sort of like the, you know, like the groundhog, it's sort of like. Tell people before everybody else sort of does that.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So hopefully, it's not going to be the precursor, you know. Where safe, white ground. Either way, we need to address it and this is a letter out.
Yeah, and maybe the flow readings, I don't know how, you know, we're doing them monthly, do we go to weekly?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we're free, definitely, yes.
And you have, oh, yeah, are there any other questions about that from the council? And then you can, Eli will finish his staff report and then public comments.
Okay, so the other thing in the staff report is that. The Chamber of Commerce is having what they call their fish sheets, which will be happening on Saturday, October seventh. They're utilizing the Trinidad's parking lot as well as town hall. Two local bands perform outdoors and. And, you know, and we will not be closing this street, so wouldn't be like. Last year and this year, we specifically are moving toward having it on an over scale. Basically for the community, the greater the community and the greater community, rather than closing the street, making it such a big event. Where the residents feel like it's too complex. City, because we are a small city. Basically, we just have one major thoroughfare. City, so closing that really. One of the things we're. Direct traffic, you know, into the other areas that already have issues. And the other one is that next week I will be going to the annual League of Cities, California Cities Conference at seven. So that's all that I have, if you have any other questions.
Other questions for Eli from the council? Okay, are there any public questions or comments regarding the staff report?
Sorry, I can't assist.
Please, Don.
Yeah, Don Allen, West Haven. The good news is that once we get to Equinox in like two weeks. The apple transpiration rate goes way down. And you'll see the creek actually rebound a little bit, so even without rain, just a lack of the slowdown in the apple transpiration around Equinox really helps. I've had personal experience with this on a stream restoration project. Sorry, I forgot the other thing I was going to say, but I'll I'll come, I'll get back to it later, but.
I'll get back up if you think of it, just raise your hand. All right, so with that, we're going to move to items from the floor. Oh, did you have a question?
This staff report in.
But it's not, it should be noted anyway, that is Eli's proposed contract. Section thirteen.
That's in our consent agenda.
Okay, well, the second to the last sentence, there's a typographical error there. It says with, or should be within.
Okay. Good to know, thank you. Okay, thank you, we'll look at that as you get to the consent agenda, thank you, Bryce. Okay, so at this time, we're items from the floor, this is the time when public can make comments on things that are not on tonight's agenda. Generally after three minutes. We'll start with Don. And then I saw.
You guys have a way out now.
Yeah, I don't know if she wanted to see my report before we get into the items from the floor.
Okay, let's double check. Jackie, did you have a question about the staff report or comment about that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Don, can I just one minute?
I was having a hard time hearing Eli regarding where we were at and what the stage two trigger is for the water, if he could go over that and. Speak a little bit louder into the mic.
Absolutely, same. Eli, you mind kind of running through that one?
Yeah, yeah, I will do that and I hope it sounds better.
So when we get into a stage two. We have what's called a. Water shortage warning, which we will be sending to all the residents, probably on a card stock versus a letter. Several things we're going to be requesting are number one, that we would like people to voluntarily cut back on. Their overall usage of water, and number two, that we'd like people to cut back on watering their landscaping. And number three, that we'd like people to avoid washing their cars and then. Number four, asking restaurants that when they do provide water. They do it only upon request of the patron in the restaurant. To in front of everyone. Did you have any further questions and hopefully right in the hearing?
I was asking on the numerical level, you said we were at or what the the threshold was. the um, threshold was for stage two. I couldn't hear that and where we are now.
Yeah, so um, the threshold is point eight six. At point eight six, we are to report it to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, which I did this morning. And we are currently at point seven eight eight uh, CFS for the flow.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Don, I think you got our public comment for open.
Yeah, and it's regarding uh, trail amenities. Um, and I noticed this on Trinidad Head and just before the meeting, I was sitting down at the overlook uh, on the harbor. And I noticed the benches there. It feel like a little kid might might keep swinging in the air. And uh, the problem with all these benches is that they were put in on sloping ground. And whenever you do that, just people sitting there, they kick the gravel away. So anytime you put in a bench, you have to have a level path with that bench. And you know, you go all the way around Trinidad Head, every one of those benches pretty much in the same situation as the ones down by Memorial Lighthouse. So I don't know if the city has money to do trail maintenance, uh, but it would be a relatively easy fix. Um, especially if you're building the bench, you know, from scratch and you just make sure you put in, you can use pressure treated four by eight duck fur and you know, make a little flat pad so that when people are sitting there, their feet are kicking gravel away because um, it's hard for people, especially old people, to sit on a bench where, you know, they kind of need a step stool or something to actually get up on the bench. Anyway, it's probably something I should bring up with the Trinidad Trails Council, or I'm not sure what the, you know, what the city's mechanism is for.
You just did.
You just did. I was just gonna say, Jack, care. I don't know if you want to take a minute, Jack?
I understand that we do have a whole uh, PowerPoint that we're gonna be looking at at the index the next month. We have it out there. It's on our website. Is that connected or reached or is that not there? Now, anyway, we
Put it there if it's not there already, so.
That goes over all the benches. It just looks at the benches where they are and they overlook, what they overlook and and we discovered that they're very, in pretty bad shape or there are a lot of them. And so there is uh, they all, people have purchased plaques on all of them. At some point in time, they're all, they're all been well over time, getting used. And so, or if you're to be able to open that up and begin seeing people who would like to put those back together. So it should all be out there. I'd love to have you uh, speak to me or come to the meeting if you'd like. Yeah, it's the Trail Committee Act, you say? It is, we'll be meeting next month. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll try to make it. Um, and yeah, I, I kind of feel bad. Like I feel like I should have been going to these for years, but I have a lot of other uh, volunteer commitments that I kind of cut back a little bit on. So, uh, yeah, anyway. There's a million like Thanks, Don.
Thank you. Other, other items from the floor?
Everyone, my name's Dick Bruce, seven eighty underwood drive. Um, I'm also the chair of the STR advisory committee, and I just wanted to let council and public know that we're having a meeting on Monday, October sixteen at six P M. We're in person meeting if you have. Okay. I would encourage everyone in attendance here and everyone in the community, anybody listening in, love to get some input from the community in terms of the talk. A lot of the T S G hours and all that here. I'm sure we'll talk about. Like a second, Bruce. Just make a deep
You said six P M, Dick?
Six P M.
Okay.
That's great. Um, on the afternoon.
Thanks.
And then I have a second. Um, I have kind of details. Yeah, for about the annual trip. Um, the city now has, I understand, most of the permission is six months to come up. Plan to reopen Trinity. Now that temporary closures for here. I'd really like to see the city ever again get Van Lake Trail open.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll um, looking just checking our uh, city calendar and the S T R meeting is on the city calendar as well. So folks can go there and click in and we'll upload that uh, the documents as they become available.
Jackie's got it.
Yes, Jackie, you have your hand raised?
I, I apologize, but I could not hear what Dick was saying hardly at all. Um, can someone paraphrase briefly?
Sure, yeah. So there's a short term rental committee meeting at six P M on October sixteen. And that will also be posted on the city calendar with the associated documents. Can you hear me? Okay, Jackie?
Yes, I can hear you great. Thank you.
And the second part was um, and a request to uh, for the city to look at reopening of Van Lake Trail.
Thank you.
I don't know if our podium might, maybe what I'll do is when folks come up all this, unfortunately, I'll have to ask everybody to just get really close to the mic because and thank you for letting us know. If anybody online is having trouble hearing, that's really important for us to know. So, so thank you for keeping us on that, Jackie, and we'll keep working on the mics here.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's just really important if if folks do turn, you know, log in on Zoom, it's truly important to be able to hear what's going on. So appreciate that. And everybody has different tones in their voice, I realize that. But it seems like on some folks, the volume is super low.
Okay.
All right, so a good reminder for all the counselors, we'll try to get close. Kissing my mic. Are there other public comments? Please.
Once again, I'd just like to know when the security guy is going to start making rounds because we're in the second week of September now. And summer's over and Labor Day is over and just want to know an approximate time we can expect to see.
He will, he will be back this weekend and Eli and I have confirmed that and we're both going to be meeting with him to establish a good consistent schedule after this unfortunate kind of break of the last, what, six, eight weeks. So again, yes, apologies for that, but he will be back on duty.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, let me just go look online really quick. I don't see any other items from the floor, so I will bring it back to the council. And uh, next on our list is the consent agenda. So um, are there any questions or comments about tonight's consent agenda?
I would actually like Bryce to tell us where the word is that he was referring to. I didn't catch it when I had it open. Please, that was not.
Yeah, sorry for going out of order on that. Yeah, section thirteen seconds of the last sentence. And you'll see that it makes a lot more sense. It says within and rather than.
Party shall each comply or it's the employer and employee agree. Employer and employer and employer, employee agree that they will at all times assist each other in defending any litigation involving the city of Trinidad or employer's duties with employer. An employer agrees to defend employee against any claim or action against him arising out of an act or omission. Recurring with the scope, this doesn't sound like the right parable.
Within occurrence.
Within the scope of the employee's employment. Okay.
That does make sense. Yeah.
Okay, yep. Thank you. And then we had another um, suggested change, which was that this agreement now would begin in September versus the
Yeah, the first page.
Yeah, so if we approve it, because we can potentially approve the consent agenda, but with those two corrections, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. Are there any other items from the consent that the counselors have questions on? Um, and then going to the public. So are there questions about the consent agenda from the public? Dorothy, did you?
Was that?
Uh, yeah, so let's, let me close the council um, on this um, consent agenda for a moment. We'll go back to public comments for items from the floor. And Dorothy, you're up if you'd like to do that. And then we'll come back to the consent agenda and finish that.
May I ask if what was asked for and received and I had to pay for mine when I took my trees down for the four trees that were removed over here? It's fine if they're removed, but the process is that you get a permit in this town. And when I had my trees removed in my backyard, my own, not only did I have to get the permit, pay substantially for the permit, I had to agree to plant four more trees before they granted me permission to take my trees down. So I wanted to know about the permit process for across the street. Is that just a mea culpa or?
Um, I
What happened over there? Not that it's wrong, but
I still don't believe the permit was obtained, but I will ask the city staff and say we'd like to comment on this and then we can, okay. So I guess the, the answer is no, and then the city will uh, take us under advisement. Um, okay, back to the consent agenda briefly. So I, I understand the council has no questions on the consent, so I'm going to go to uh, the public. Are there any public comments about tonight's consent agenda? Changes, that sort of thing. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a gentle motion.
Uh, just real quick, you said effective, where, where's the July versus September? Sorry, August versus September. I see effective.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, yeah, everything in the contract is correct, except on the very first page, way at the top.
Oh, okay.
Within the heading. That was the only one I didn't touch.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I knew it was there somewhere.
Then I would uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the um, updated verbiage in section thirteen with to within and all dates in the agree, in the contract with the city manager reflecting the September one start date.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that I, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. And that then brings us to uh, the main part of tonight's meeting, which begins with our agenda item number one, which is the continued discussion regarding traffic calming measures for View, Ocean and Underwood. And I guess I would say to some extent, it's traffic calming measures for Trinidad in general, but um, and so because we kind of broadened the topic. And this is part of a, I guess I'd call it a three part series because we spoke about maybe more. We spoke about it uh, at the last meeting. We'll, we'll speak about it at the next meeting. So um, with that, then I guess I'll turn it over to you, Eli, if you want to kind of get us grounded on where the discussion should have.
Okay, uh, so as was just mentioned, we'll be discussing this further at the next meeting. Uh, Josh Wolf from G H D, who is uh, an engineer who specializes in our streets, uh, is unavailable today, but will be available for our Tuesday meeting. So he will join us then. His one rep mostly prepared the information that appears in the packet, uh, along with staffs who have worked these together and uh, a lot of this information is reflecting number one, what the cost would be uh, for such traffic, uh, common measures as speed humps and we've gotten requests from actually that I'm aware of total nine streets in the city. Uh, and this picture that's up there, it would be considered a temporary uh, street hump, uh, which could be placed, uh, they're originally talking about Ocean and View. And the concern in the city is that there's a lot of uh, traffic that ends up instead of continuing on Trinity, you know, they, a lot of times they turn off of Trinity and return on either Ocean or View. Originally come on Ocean and View and then uh, you know, and end up using the other streets of the city. Usually we'd like to see the uh, virtual traffic especially, uh, and the R Ps utilize Main Street to Trinity Street to Edwards. And as a result, especially Ocean and View have been getting a lot of the static traffic. So since then, um, Underwood would have requested because there's a curb in Underwood and at that point, uh, people uh, sometimes don't see pedestrians with children walking uh, on Underwood. Uh, same thing has been mentioned about Edwards, especially with the curb on Edwards. By Slendo and Van Lake and a way of going further down. Then we've had petition from Berry Road and also Camalea. And uh, then we had the letter that was asking about Main Street, Trinity, Edwards. So it's all together ended up being a total of nine streets that I had counted. So there's several ways we can approach it. Number one, we definitely should be uh, waiting until this next meeting in October uh, to have Josh Wolf present that we can address further. But in the meantime, staff has played some signs up on several of these streets, meaning specifically Ocean and giving notice to the public that speed humps are being considered uh, for those streets. As far as uh, our approach would number one be doing a traffic study uh, for uh, streets in general. Uh, that would be the ideal situation. Uh, in addition to that, uh, county has a speed hum policy. Ideally, we would have something similar to what the county would have where, you know, we could be addressing speed humps because a lot of people might feel like, why did you put it here? Why did you put it there? Uh, so getting a little more consistent. Beyond all of that, at least my initial feeling is that uh, if we did not want to do the traffic study uh, right now. Didn't want to do county policy right now. The only exception I would see is possibly Ocean just because they seem to be utilized more than others. Connect with a main street and eventually connect with Edward Street. Uh, otherwise, I would suggest doing uh, traffic studies. Number one, the number of vehicles that are going on a street. And number two, for the speed of the vehicles that are going on the street. So, so that information could be done. And in the staff report, it does mention that uh, between the county and Arcata, you might be able to get some equipment from them. So city engineer Josh Wolf suggests the city consider requesting traffic data and equipment from County Public Works for the city of Arcata to collect data to help zero in on the problem and target specific solutions on an objective basis. This equipment will gather traffic volumes, frequency and speeds and may provide and may prove useful in developing criteria similar to the county public works, speed hub and installation policies. So anyway, these are all things to consider, but uh, ideally, when you do approach any problem and you want to reach a solution, uh, gather data and and then make a decision based on.
Since you like, uh, what was the uh, price of this study?
For, for, for these particular, yeah, uh, there are five to six thousand each. Uh, let me see if I have this. Oh, for the traffic study, yeah. First of all, it was mentioned here about uh, containing these from the county or Arcata. So we can ask to, you know, if we can borrow. And and then uh, we would place
The study is equipment. It isn't somebody, it isn't
It's both.
Equipment.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. In, in this particular case, it, it would be like uh, like a host. So when you go over the host, uh, it, it'll register how many vehicles are passing. And then if you have two hosts with a certain distance between them, then that'll help give you the speed between the two hosts.
At the length of the vehicle, the RVs size of the city street, and then there's pulling a car behind you. We won't get, we won't get links.
No, no, we, we wouldn't get the length, not, not with that equipment, right? Uh, so beyond that, and Josh, if the next meeting could actually elaborate more on the this is just a suggestion. We didn't obtain any particular costs for the traffic study. So you might be able to enlighten us a bit more on that. But certainly, if we just borrow the equipment, there could be a minimal cost. You know, it wouldn't be like a formal fancy, uh you know, professional traffic study, but at least it would give us an indication uh uh some information as to uh number of cars and the speed there.
Uh just preliminarily, uh there's been such a response that it seems getting information would be the fairest way to proceed, even though it seems like View and Ocean take the hit, but that may be more perception than we would see.
Yeah, part of it is is number of vehicles in general, but also part of it is possibly trying to discourage people from using View and Ocean to uh wait Trinity and you know. That's what they would mostly be doing, Trinity. On the other streets, yes, people might be speeding. Uh yes, there may be blind curves that need to be addressed to make it safer, but they're not being utilized from point A to point B. Suctions.
In addition to the, oh, sorry, Jackson, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask about the the humps themselves, but I think I was a little confused about how many.
Mike.
Uh how how many humps you would need uh for each road? I is it, are we looking at just two humps on, if we did two roads and we have two humps on it? Or or do they cross the water completely? You just put one single up down, is that right? So we're only ordering four for the two roads if we just did those two, is that correct?
Yeah, I I'm just gonna try to over the gate because I think there's a little more person parts aside and everything. And we were talking earlier about the fact that actually happening is that, you know, you don't end up just hitting one and then speeding. The two might come slowing down street itself. If the alternative gate would be.
Yeah, thank you, um. The cost per speed hump approximately $6,000. And they are eighteen foot wide, ten and a half foot, let's call it deep. And uh so it'd be one hump would cover that street section. The county's policy, which I was just thumbing through here on, uh can't really read it right now, but it's it's kind of small, but the county's policy addresses lengths and for best practices of streets. You know, when two speed humps are ideal and the patterns that drivers take, speeding up, stopping, and then just speeding up again versus having two, which actually could impact the the behavior and the patterns that the drivers play. So Josh and I were talking and Josh believed that if we're going to do a trial period, one should be sufficient. We that should be able to tell whether or not they're affected. Uh but then if we're going to do a permanent installation, then two speed humps might need a better approach for Ocean and View. You know, but for trial period, one should be sufficient. And and you'll see the patterns, you know, I mean, the neighbors outside might hear engines rev up, brakes, and then rev up, bump bump. You know, so it might, it might change that.
And so it would be s- one each for a pilot would be six K each, roughly?
Yes.
Okay, so twelve thousand total.
They come marked just like, just like I have on the screen.
Yeah.
They have all the uh reflective markings that are required, they come with that. And the only thing that would need be needed to install with it would be signage on each side of the the speed hump so that a driver can see them, because you may not be able to see them and then, you know, if it's if you're really paying attention, so there needs to be a sign and public works can install those.
And then you.
The the.
If you put in one uh for a trial, when if you get successful and you want to put in two, I would think we locate them slightly differently.
Yeah, I was looking at the installation guidelines for these and there is some, you know, you drill into the asphalt and there are bolts that, you know, with some adhesive, so that can be removed. And it can be separated and put into a different uh powering street.
And then you had also gave, you sent us out a the the information from a, it wasn't really a traffic study, but it was a, it was a traffic, you know, kind of recommendations made, what, two years ago? GHD, et cetera. And so and a number of those things haven't been implemented yet, as I understand. So I guess I would really want to hear from the public on all of these ideas and things, because I know a lot of people have some, you know, are here because they want to talk about this, so I I'll be brief, but I feel like there's sort of a short term and a long term look at this. And and the longer term is not just kind of mitigation, but it's also enforcement, which we don't have a lot of. And it may even be prevention, because we never really, I don't know that we've ever really brainstormed. How do you kind of prevent having so much traffic in Trinidad? And I know that's a big, that's a big hairy audacious goal, but you know, more bicycling, more public transportation, you know, shuttles down to the marina and you know, those kinds of things, I think we could, we could potentially brainstorm, but that would be more something long term. And I agree with uh councillor Breckenridge that getting the data, making Dan and Eli data-driven decisions are always helpful on this kind of thing, because uh uh of course, everybody's going to want their street to be safer in any way that we can make it safer. And if that is a a speed hump, you know, uh that's great. In fact, I spoke to Principal Nichols at the uh elementary school today. And they would like to have more safety for the kids, so they'd like that crosswalk to be a speed hump and, you know, and or maybe some uh some, uh what do you call those little humps that you put, little bumps that you put in front of, you know what I'm talking about?
Rumble strip.
Thank you, rumble strip. So that would be another option. So anyway, and we talked about buses and they have a morning bus, but you know, could they have an afternoon bus? Right now, they can't sort that out, but that, so there's just a lot of kind of, you know, variations on this theme. So the question is, if that's a long term and maybe do a traffic site, is there a short term where we say, well, gosh, we haven't piloted traffic humps, maybe we want to pilot some traffic humps, and this might be an opportunity to do that. Doesn't mean that we're not going to put traffic humps in other streets or to Katie's point, move them around. But you know, that could be a short-term solution. We won't decide that tonight because we want to hear from everybody, I guess, but anyway, so that's my my thought on that. Steve here, though.
I just, I fully agree that um more data, I think is, I mean, yes, I'm the scientist, so that's what I do. But I think it's really important for us to hear, and then looking at the county guidelines, it actually gives us like, right? To be eligible for a a a speed hump, eighty-fifth percentile speed must be or exceed thirty-two miles an hour, I think, is a little excessive, just because we're talking about streets where the speed limit is twenty.
Fifteen.
Fifteen or twenty. Fifteen, right? So but it has to exceed the the miles per hour. So I think that getting the data, I think, is really important. And as I understand it, the 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 traffic team that Josh was talking about is, yeah, it's it's nominal if it if it costs anything. But then Josh would have to, we'd have to spend some money for him to analyze the the information. So that's my recognition, but I I too am very interested to hear what folks. And just to be clear, right, we've all read the emails, we've all seen the information, I think as late as one o'clock, something like that. So I'm just just know that that if you did submit and anyone in the Zoom sphere, if you did submit anything, we've we've had a chance to review that. So um just know that we're coming at this with that information in our minds.
Absolutely. All right, and so that's a good segue. Let's go ahead and open to public comments regarding traffic. I don't see, I do see one hand raised in the room and I got senior mind yet, so please come to the podium.
Y'all can work it out yourselves.
Yeah.
But do do speak into the microphone just for our Zoom folk.
Uh, yeah, so um I live on eight oh six Edwards, similar to Edward Street. That's as part of Edward Street. And uh so I I share the concern about about the speed of traffic. It's gonna be fast down that street. Um, I'm not, however, a fan of the idea of putting speed bumps. Um, I've lived on a street where speed bumps still exist, so I have the experience um for a number of reasons. So um first first of all, they're noisy. Um, and the city has done a really great job on light pollution, I think. It's nice and dark here, um but and it's fairly quiet. Once you start adding those things in, you have the tenuous e-bump, you have the sound of the springs, you have more acceleration, more braking. So and it's just cut, and that's constant, so. Hey, okay, this there's traffic, but at least in city, Mississippi, it it becomes a more kind of up and down. Um, for that reason, I think if you want to do some kind of a things and find out the traffic it is, put out some loud speakers, let people know just a speed hump is starting to and that's not realistic, but I think it's important for people to realize what they're getting into. Um the thing that uh I found out on street versus the motion, and it's very, very biased. It makes a really big difference how high if you're, if you drive a small car and typically go to the ground, it's a very big difference to you. If you're driving a a current vehicle, it's not that big a deal, you can just kind of rampage down them and not really care. So uh it's going to work for certain types of cars. Actually, they're not. A effective solution. So uh the thing that really affects the speed of traffic is ultimately the width of the street. Wide street like Edwards, people cruise down. First street, especially where you get things like, things like, it slows people down. And that doesn't make any a lot of extra noise, but it does cause people to slow down and pay attention. So for that reason, I mean, long term, don't know about those other proceeds, I words. Favor of sure that one of these sidewalk street type of pedestrians are, if that is, they're a big fan. Fact is, that the part of sidewalks chasing. Sidewalk on one side and marked, parking on the other side of Edwards, could that stream and big thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, uh I want to ask you, your comments about uh speed bumps and then there's speed humps. And they're different heights, what was your experience with bumps or humps?
These were more high pumps, they're uh, this was, these are wide, you know, they're not the little Mexico, they're not short.
One of the distinctions is the height, like bumps are higher.
Yeah.
Humps or, I I just didn't know what your experience was.
And I, I mean, I don't know exactly what the height and length of the of these are and how exactly they would be. That's what what I said. Effective certain types of cars far and whatnot, as you can bottom in the earned three, it's a huge difference. Also, it solves the problem. Three nice plate, well.
Thank you, thanks for your comments.
And I just have to say, I've lost fillings on speed bumps in Mexico, so I know.
Those are bumps, yeah.
They stay on axles and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Uh, number one, we do have our uh AC funds, which will be happening next year and specifically on Edwards. Uh we will be creating two crosswalks, uh one at Hector, one at Galindo. Yeah. That will help slow down the traffic on Edwards. In the uh, so so and Josh, next month will be able to give more information about that. Number two, I did want to comment that when I spoke to Josh over the boat and mentioned Edwards, uh he specifically said that that a speed humps will not work on, particularly the elevation. You can't, they only work on a level street, you can't build on a street that's steep. So just those two points.
Okay, and I see Dwight has his hand up. So I have someone in the room, I believe you had a comment, and I don't, I'm going to go to the person in the room first, Dwight, because I think he was first, but um if you don't mind, and then we'll, I'll come back to you.
That's okay.
Yeah, so just one minute.
Could I, could I have a comment, please?
Yes, Dwight, I have one person in the room uh who who was ahead of you, is that okay or?
I I mean, I've not seen the third.
Feed his time, please go ahead.
Uh, the main thing, I'm happy to have the other person speak, but I can't hear him. The mic at the, at the podium.
Interrupt him. Okay, Dwight, Dwight, why don't you go ahead and uh make your comment and then we're gonna, that'll give us a second to work on the mic.
That would be good, thank you. Um, I'm interested in following up on on the comment about uh speed humps on a slo- sloping upward or downward street or are difficult or what the reason is, because that would be the first street that I would highly recommend. That have, even if if I don't, I don't see why, uh even if we have to go to a more permanent one, where you've got the uh the crosswalks at planned at Galindo and at Hector, simply have a raised crosswalk. And that there exists a number of those in front of schools and Arcata and other places. So we really ought to consider something of that sort. Uh, to me, the 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 street that most needs speed humps or traffic slowing is um Edwards. And and related to that, because we're interested in in mobility around town, Edwards is very unsafe for walkers. We need to have someplace to get from town to the beach where people can walk, not just ride bicycles or drive their cars. And the the city is a little behind the eight ball in terms of having an alternative uh walking place, walking on Edwards is not uh appropriate. And the only other thing is that uh I highly support the collecting data. Um, well, there's two other things, I support collecting data, I think everybody's on board with that, but have we thought about having speed cameras? There are towns which have speed cameras, they've got a lot of pushback from many people who are angry because they get tickets. But if you you could, they wouldn't get around very fast if we had a big sign in the front of the, of the city that said, our streets are going to be ticketed at two miles above the speed limit, period. Okay? Any comments?
Better there today as well, so that's another one. And then Dwight, for the um Edwards and the humps on on slope, uh maybe we can defer that question to Josh next month, because, you know, he's the engineer, if that's okay?
That'd be good, because there's a a number of comments I took to residents about Edwards, and we need to, we need to find somewhere to slow down Edwards, period.
I I think, yeah, I think I see a lot of heads nodding, so so that's a uh very good comment, thank you.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is, can can you hear me while while we're at it?
Do you guys hear him?
A lot, online, just come back if you can.
Okay. Worth, worth checking, okay, so so, okay. Uh, my name is Willie Stein, I live up on Himalaya Drive, and I signed on to my neighbor Rebecca's letter asking for traffic on Frontage Road. Um, I'll speak first to Ocean, actually, I most recently lived on Ocean before I moved to Himalaya. I've also lived on East Street, so I have some experience with both View and Ocean. Um, I'm agnostic as to what traffic calming measures we use, and I think it's probably a well-taken point about speed humps being allowed, but um do agree that 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 would be worthwhile and maybe some thoughtful scoping of other measures might be worthwhile. Um, I also like the idea of gathering data, I mean, I'm getting a traffic study done particularly on Frontage Strawberry Rock. Um, there are five little kids that live on Berry in Himalaya, some of them are mine, some of them are hers. Um, there's some other folks up there as well. Uh, and there are other slightly older kids that live there as well, so I think the grand total of school-aged kids who are are in the market to walk to Trinidad school is probably nine kids. Um, I think it would be a a wise decision to check what kinds of speeds and how many cars Frontage Road is carrying The whole walk down Berry and to the school, we have to really keep our heads up the swivel. And I don't think I have a solution for dealing with the freeway air change. Not really sure what we do about that. That's probably a larger problem, but it's a very clear place to have sort of a traffic calming intervention on the Frontage Road, particularly because there's a blind turn on the Berry Road there with some kind of funny visibility issues up the curve of the hill. And it would be great if people were not, you know, people unfamiliar or not getting off the freeway and then kind of barreling their way towards Strawberry Rock when we go there. I would also add that whatever the results of the study, now there is kind of this concept that you take the probability of a harm and the magnitude of a harm and you you cross reference those things and and use that to make decisions about preventative measures. Given the fact that we have little kids who were taking to school and at some point we'd like to trust them to be able to walk to school on their own. We'd really like that to be seriously considered that there'd be a crosswalk or other traffic calming measure. I do see people getting off the highway and ramping speed right back up to go down the Frontage Road. So that would be my my submission. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to go next to Anna online. She's had her hand up and then we have another comment.
Hi, I am a resident of Hector and I'm mildly concerned about the crosswalk. We can talk about that later, especially if it's raised. I wanted a second with the gentleman said about living next to a a speed hump situation because my experience with a decade of living next to speed humps, no matter how many there are, and we had about 10, is people will slam on their brakes, go over the hump, speed up to the next hump, slam on their brakes, go over the next hump and continue that way all the way down the road. The what we want people to do and what they actually do are usually not perfectly aligned. And I know that there are other options for traffic mitigation. And it would be wonderful to do a study to get the data and to have a conversation about if there's other options. As somebody who walks a small dog around every single street in this town, including Edwards, I don't want to I'd like to feel a little bit safer. I'd love the than than Phantom Trail to be open, for instance, so I can get off Edwards, period. I'd love for there to be a sidewalk on Edwards, to be more sidewalks in town, period, to be more pedestrian friendly. I don't, that's a longer conversation and I don't know the history. I'm sure there's a bunch of issues with sidewalks in the town. But I would, I would definitely urge a very long and thorough look at the consequences of putting in speed humps. Because especially on a street like Edwards, people aren't thinking about the fact that there are boats with trailers going up and down that street all day. And the trailer were clang 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 clang, starting at what, however, whenever the guys go down to the dock. And I think Edwards is already loud and I don't live on Edwards, so it doesn't bother me, but I do think it should be something that should be factored into our calculus that there is no perfect way to get humans to do the right thing. But I think that if we really look at it seriously, we might be able to arrive at a a solution that does not disrupt our beautiful town quite as intensely as, you know, 2am clanging trailers.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We got a couple of rounds of applause in the room. I don't know if you can hear that.
I didn't.
All right, and we have Dawn at the podium.
Yeah, Dawn Allen West Haven. You know, when I first moved in and turned it out in 1983, there was an issue of kids skateboarding down Edward Street towards the harbor that concerned people. And I naively suggested maybe we could put in some speed bumps to make it less attractive. And Dave Zibo, who was on the city council at the time, and I think he used to work for Caltrans, he just said, you can't do it because it's it adds something to do with the harbor status and federal transportation highway act or something like that. But he said you couldn't put speed bumps or bumps on Edwards in particular. Then I don't know about the other things. I mean, I've heard all the comments and I I totally appreciate what they're saying. But anyway, that would be a question for Josh Wolf to just make sure that if you did consider that, that it is legal. But I I agree with some of the comments is that I think there's other things that would be better, especially if there was a sidewalk on Edward Street and then you had a couple of crosswalks and a couple of bulbous, I think that would be pretty effective, just like it has been right across the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. How's how's my volume? Am I okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay. I just want to echo what Anna was saying. Transportation is my background. And it is super important to have a plan before you do piecemeal traffic calming. Because you do not realize the impact that can have on the within the city limits. Because the effort shift will happen to the streets where you don't have traffic calming. So I I heartily agree. I think finding the funds to bring in, I believe I heard Steve or someone say that GHD had someone that could come in and do a traffic study. I know with the infrastructure bill, there's a lot of funding available. There's a lot of safety funding available. As we are able to complete our projects at the harbor, you know, our our hope is for traffic calming there as well. But as Anna mentioned, we have the large vehicles, the boats, the trailers, the RVs, all coming to the harbor and parking. So I think it's super important to not rush into traffic calming without realizing the impacts to the entire grid. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Sorry, I'm not seeing music. Six out of seven Parker. I just want to reiterate my encouragement of feasibility study. We can't do anything without the facts. And I also encourage us to, like many people have already said here today, to look at all the options, not just make a reactionary one based on what we think we know, as the councilman Broken Bridge pointed out, but what the actual data and facts are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Brown. I do my homework. And I live at nine nine Berry. I agree with a lot of things that have been said about the study, having a comprehensive study as well as considering all possible traffic calming measures. I think I'll just put in the plug that I don't know what the speed limit is on the Frontage Road. I don't know what the speed limit is on my street. I don't know what the speed limit is on most of the streets in town because I'm only actually aware of one speed limit sign that is on Main Street under the Nicoletta Street by the gas station. So while I I completely agree that having a comprehensive look and not piecemealing things along is probably the best way, I do think there's probably a very little fallout from putting up some more speed limit signs. If they were blinking like the one in the blue lake that reminds people like, hey, the speed limit is 15 miles an hour here or whatever it is. And you're going to over that, I think that would be even better as something that could be done sooner than maybe with as broad routine ramifications. Thanks.
Thank you.
The blinking lights can be solar, can't they? They're low cost.
So Kenny, did you like making it hot as well?
Yeah, I'm a new guy. I've seen four clicks through Ocean Avenue, the Don Arson since 1983. The problem with people stating that has gotten worse since they put the traffic on. A certain number of people turn the odds, get those two confused. You know, who thinks they're being, they're getting, they're being slick and they're getting around such a bad news and alternate way. Pretty much through traffic, I think. It's it's a problem, but I have I have mixed feelings about what the best solution might be. He bumps. Playing in the arcade and say, I don't care. For me, they were fine because I just slowed it right down, you know, to a nice slope. I think the noise factor is proportionate to how fast people hit them. Go over, whoa, it doesn't make much noise at all. You know, the faster you go, the more your cars can bounce and tell people that they've actually experienced it firsthand, you know, that probably. The other thing, to me, it seems like we've got to decide whether we want speed bumps or not. Let's get the asphalt ones to start with because $6,000 piece for rubber ones that are only going to last how long? Then what are we going to do with them? But if but if there are garden to get the temporary ones, we ought to get some used ones from some other city that use them first because I don't think they really wear out too much. But I think they are a little noisier than the asphalt ones because they kind of flop around a little more. Camera idea is really nice too. Maybe you should go super high tech and just like they have a sister over there. People get to take it in the map. Say, you know, go speeding down streets, but then there's the question of keeping, you know, vangos is just turning around. Glad it's being talked about and I think October maybe will be more good information.
All right. Thank you. And I see there are other public comments. I'll bring it back to the council. What are we, what are you folks thinking at the moment?
I think one of the things that is interesting is when we look at the post in the news, we see some people really trying to get traffic to stop going down those streets, which yeah, or just to let's forsake your research. So I really think it'd be nice to get even to look at those humps and see if we can get them in place and see if we can actually get traffic to be able to like, but do like, I think this idea of like cameras up in certain places might be a one of the best ideas. Great ideas tonight. They're all in my paper theme.
Wow, we've got lots to work with now. So I hope you all come back. Josh is here, so we can how difficult all these things are because it's a unless we can find grants, it's just we're going to get a lot of money to do a lot of stuff. So as Jackie said, there's money out there. So maybe that's the number one thing we should do is start looking at grant possibilities to so we can start taking this serious and get us going because it really really sounds like we got a lot of people ready. It's a good time to work on it.
Thoughts you want to share?
I'll reiterate that I depend in favor of traffic study, calming study. Because there's so many people wanting our attention to their streets. I just think in the sense of fair play, it's going to, it's going to fly better and and be fair to actually have have actual information. I was also wondering about the the things we might do that we haven't even done yet, like somebody mentioned, how about posting some, you know, speed signs? How about blinking signs? How about, I don't even know if there is a line down the middle of Ocean in terms of it's a two way street, but people act like it's a one lane street. You know, what else might be done sort of of speed humps? So I was thinking about that.
Just to reiterate that I think the the collecting of information is really key. And I really want to bring everyone back to while every street is important to have safety, right? I really appreciate the comment that there are more kids in town, right? Underwood, when I moved there, had no kids. Now there's kids everywhere. It's a, it's a different town, right? And the city made a intentional effort on now you got me forgetting what street this is. Trinity, Jesus. We made an intentional effort to slow down the traffic in front of the school and I'm glad that you brought that up, right? That that you're noticing that since that has been done, there's more traffic on Ocean View. And I think that's what keeps coming up is that this conversation keeps coming up because those two streets are the most heavily impacted by the through traffic. Right? So anyone can drive fast on any street, right? I love sitting on my porch like the two old grumpy muppets up in the balcony. God damn it, slow down, kids. Why are you driving so fast? But it's not to the effect of, you know, everybody doesn't have to drive down my street to get to the harbor. Right? Or to to go anywhere really, except down my street. So on Underwood. So I just really want to bring us at least to back to the point that we need to focus on. The main traffic through town has been affected by the the effect of these traffic calming measures on on Trinity. So let's let's keep that. It makes sure that we get that in our study so that we can see the effect of those those two, those efforts that have happened out there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good point. What successes have we had so we can replicate those? I I guess I'm in the camp now of doing a traffic study and I don't mean, I mean, maybe it's traffic study light because it's, you know, getting some equipment and and just at least getting a sense of volume and speed. Because sometimes it seems like people are going really fast. They're not. Other times they're going really fast. They're going 50 miles an hour and it'd be really nice to be able to clock that and know that and have that information and make sure that we expand to Frontage Road, for example, as well. But I guess I'd also say, so so traffic study, I'd be big in in favor of. I I do think that often we spend time doing studies and gathering information and we get the reports and we don't take the action. And so in this case, I guess, just harking back to what Dave shared with us, we have this road, you know, the road, local city of Trinidad, a local roadway safety plan. And there on page 32 and 33 is a whole list of suggestions that I won't go through with everyone. But I would say that maybe next in October, we we take kind of a look at that specific table and say, let's check some of these boxes and things that we can take action on. And some of them are things like signage, right? So okay, we don't necessarily do them all, but we could do some of them. So
And and not wait on those.
And not wait on those for the study because we've already had, you know, we've already paid companies to go out and do the research and make a recommendation. So if we don't want to take the recommendation, we don't have to, but we should at least look at the recommendation and and say why we're not doing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I really, really appreciate the public input on this. It's 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 a tough one. I mean, it really is all about safety and security and, you know, just, you know, quality of life. So it's important to all of us.
All right. One question. Several times people brought up the idea of a sidewalk down Edwards. Where did that fall? Not necessarily in the traffic calming study, but somewhere.
Yeah.
Connective.
Yeah. So regarding sidewalk on Edwards, I've been here since 2009. We had a Caltrans project, it's over 700,000. A sidewalk on the south side of Edwards. And unfortunately, it didn't go through it. And it was understandable because it would have made the driveways for the residents that are on Edwards steeper. Definitely if you have a steeper drive when they're backing out and you've got a sidewalk where people might be walking on it, you might not be able to see the people on the sidewalk. Fortunately, the cars now do have, you know, but there's a camera and it could help. But but either way, that didn't go through. We we made that effort. It didn't go through. One of our council members, Dave Grover, had suggested possibly doing a sidewalk on the north side of Edwards. Which they entail possibly getting a little bit of more right away where the hillside is. That can be looked at. Naturally, you do have parking there. You can't afford to lose parking on that side of the street. And then the other side, the south side, actually has like pedestrians. pedestrians. So anyway, those are different things to look at. In our conversation regarding the Van Wick Trail. We were also talking about what improvements we can do to Edwards. And ideally, even whether we opened or not opened the Van Wick Trail, even if we opened it and had improvements there. It wouldn't hurt to have some improvements on Edwards. Specifically, if we didn't do a sidewalk on the north side of the street. And on the south side where there is that bike lane, it's also used by pedestrians. We're talking about possibly having something to separate that between the drivers from the traffic. So so there are some ways that we're looking at. Make it a little bit more, a little safer, you know, a little more separate where people wouldn't really be into that. The other thing about traffic calming and possibly ball bouts, that all makes sense. The only problem on Edwards is we we don't want people where it's too narrow and you've got larger vehicles to end up going out of their lane. And if they go out of their lane, that could create more problems. So so we have to take all that consideration. It's certainly having Josh at the meeting next week. We can talk more about it.
All right. With that, I'm going to move on into item number two on tonight's agenda, which is the discussion decision regarding proclamation. Twenty twenty three dash oh one, which is proclaiming September as septic awareness month. And am I turning it over to you or?
Well, we do have Jennifer here. So Jennifer is our septic guru. And she's the one who brought us Septic Sue. And 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 when I started here in twenty nineteen. I did want to, I found that, you know, the septic situation was an important situation, especially now as we're getting more environmentally friendly, hopefully. As a nation, we need to make sure that we're not damaging the environment. And because of our location and things slowed down with the storm water and so on to the harbor and to the ocean, we certainly don't want that accompanied by fail septic situations. And one of the things that I encountered was saying, well, someone else is not doing it. And that was their excuse for not doing it. So when Jennifer came around and I had already dressed as Trevor, we decided let's do something holistically where the whole city has to come up to speed and make sure that where it rests is set. So it over to Jennifer.
So just to show you an overview of September twenty twenty two, when the program started, we were at, as a town, twenty seven percent. The town had current permits, which represented about forty three percent. I'm sorry, about forty three percent, sorry, forty three permits were issued in the town as current permits. And now a year later, September twenty twenty three, it would be continued. We are at a hundred and twenty three households have current active permits. So we're at sixty one percent as a town. So we have made about fifty percent progress. We've sent letters to all the households in town that have not had permits issued. So we've made touch points with every single household at least twice if we've needed to. With touch base with everyone at least twice if we've needed to. So we're down to now our last kind of not holdouts, I won't say, but kind of our last group of people who we're working on to get voluntary compliance with the program. Working on this last set of letters that are going to go out in October. Now to people who have either expired permits or no permit at all, asking them to voluntarily get on board with the program again. So that's kind of where we're at. One, do you have that last slide a second? And this is where we're projected to be at. This is our pending permit files. This is where we're at. I'm projected to be at sixty six percent. These are the ones that kind of are in limbo right now with Trevor, who are files that she's currently working on. So these are where we're expected to be probably by October first, so it'll be at sixty six percent as a town. So I'm happy to answer. You guys have incredible work. Thank you. It's really, it's really it's really, you know, it's our residents finding it important and taking action and it's really up to, you know, the town. And it's my appreciation to all of our residents for taking action. So.
What do you think are the reasons, like the top couple of reasons for the holdouts, if you will? Like the folks that I mean, we might never make it to a hundred percent. We'll try, but even eighty percent, you know, like the eighty twenty rule. Are there people, I mean, without any names, like is there some common themes?
I think some people pump on a semi regular basis, but they just don't feel like they need to get that extra step of the inspection and don't really like that. Final piece is important and working on educating them for that final piece. This last letter that's going to go out to them is really asking people to contact myself and putting in their game as well directly to explain to me why they don't think that they need to participate. And if they have a reason, they've got extenuating circumstances where they don't feel like they can participate and get into the program and want to know about it. If there's some sort of extenuating circumstances or cost is an issue. I want to be able to talk to those people directly, one on one.
Yeah, because I mean, there is a cost to the inspection. It's fairly nominal, I think.
Correct. And it's definitely less than if you had same sewer. Right. So I want to be able to go over those pros and those, you know, disadvantages with people in the industry. So I'm asking them to reach out individually.
And at one point, I believe there was some funding for folks to bring their septic up to code. Is, I mean, I believe this was years ago. Is there still any available funding for that? Or was that a program from from the past?
That was a program from the past. There's not any specialized spending like that out there. There is some low cost loans that are available, but I have access to some program information like that that I can share with people. Give them that information.
And I just want to make sure I'm getting the numbers right. You said in September twenty two, we had roughly forty some odd permits up to up to their current. And now we're over a hundred and twenty?
Correct. We had fifty three people had current permits in September twenty twenty two, and now we have a hundred and twenty three.
Okay, so seventy permits over the last year.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that out loud.
Yeah.
Right? Having gone through the permitting process myself, it's not, it's not just a something you do between bowls of cereal. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, I just want everyone to know seventy permits were approved this year. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So after getting
It's lovely to see something that's just so concrete.
Yeah.
You know, that you can just like really measure it and see a positive movement. So Jack.
I was saying, I did very perfectly my set pieces the whole summer. Since I have been, we have digged the whole thing up, all the least fun. I'm just curious, what do you, what happens next? How people are just are not cooperating with this or aren't able to do it? There's a stage. Is there something that we're going to do as a city to do something about them not doing it? What's the next plan for people who are not getting?
Well, voluntary compliance is always my hope and my way. Along with the education piece, which Septic Sue has been doing to hopefully educate people so they understand the importance and the why behind the program. And that's kind of what why I designed Septic Sue to go along with the program to use the education piece. Those letters that are going up in October, as I said, are asking people to reach out to me to explain to me why they don't think that they're going to be able to integrate into the program. In January, if people are still not able to integrate into the program. Then the city is going to look at some more direct ways to communicate with people. One on one. So yes. Going to get a little more direct with people one on one.
I like it.
I appreciate your language.
Everybody, the the mic has been dropped, everybody.
Direct communication.
That's wonderful. Any, okay, so let me open to, unless councilors, any other comments or questions? Okay, let me open for public comments then on the subject. Can't see anybody online raising their hands. Do you guys?
Usually it pops up on the top there.
Yeah, I don't, my window open anymore. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
You guys, yeah, very good.
So you want? I move that we approve the proclamation twenty twenty three dash oh one, claiming September eighteenth through twenty second as septic smart.
Second. Katie wanted a second. Okay, let's let the record reflect that. Katie seconded that. All those in favor? I. All right. So we are going to move on to the next item, which is discussion about public outreach and awareness options for the city's leash laws. So as many of you know, we've had challenges with some off leash, you know, more challenges. We've had some attacks by off leash dogs. So the city has been really trying to ramp up its efforts to to do more about this. And I think Gabe, is this one you're going to cover?
I can contribute for sure. I'll let Eli here.
Eli, do you want to pick this off?
I wasn't sure if I was standing to think.
Yeah, so yeah, we've got both Dave and Jennifer here regarding the site. So yes, we've been wanting to get the word out more specifically about the city leash laws and trying to get people to cooperate. It's a difficult process when you're dealing with this especially in itself. We have purchased fifty small signs scattered around town. We potentially did smaller signs because we didn't want them to distract from the drivers when they're driving. So it would be geared towards the pedestrians as they're walking. And then hopefully most people will will and have cooperate. We've seen a lot of clients. Since then, we've done a contract with the county, with the animal control officers where they can randomly come into town and check things out. Also can report things to them and they can act quickly rather than having the process before where they would have to call the city and ask us. Specifically, we've got one particular lady that we've noticed that doesn't have her dogs on leash. She lives in the city. But either way, so when you see her next, we will be contacting the animal control. Other than that, I know some information is included in your package that Gabe and Jennifer had put together regarding breaking your program that's similar to what's being done at Blue Lake. Which is like a public service announcement. At the same time, gives information about the city, possibly some events, some news. And it's really interesting the way it's done. And and an example was produced and Gabe played it to a couple of us right before the meeting. And that, you know, part of when I turned it over, that would be one of the things.
So thank you for letting us have a chance to make some suggestions. Like Eli said, this has been a collaborative process first, starting off with immediate response of what had occurred. We had dog incidents. We needed to have action. We started with the signage, direct marketing to homes, encouraging leash law licensing, and then now we have a contract with animal control. So we should be hearing is we want more. We're hearing that from the council. So we, other than direct marketing, we're trying to, you know, just brainstorm different ways to get the word out. We got a new website. Which would be nice. We can deploy that as soon as we get our heads wrapped around it and the power of our website. But but what we, what keeps ringing in my head is that we the city wants to see more outreach to the general public, not necessarily to the people in town, because we can direct market. We can send letters to everybody in town all day. They may or may not be the problem. Two incidents as Andre Hale brought up in the animal control, the last meeting was at the last meeting. Was that number two accidents? You know, basically from local dogs that just got away. So what are we trying to commit? What what are we trying to do here? And we ran into a guy named Colin Vance, who works with K K A radio station. He's out behind, I think, talking in town months ago about his Blue Lake campaign. Blue Lake's on the row for sales tax revenue. They're 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 using radio to to draw people into their community that can spend money and raise revenue. But as a as a radio fan myself, I listen to baseball games on the radio and I don't, not everybody listens to radio, but I find I find it really intriguing how how K K A has been using creatively the radio to reach people from a public service perspective. It's something that's kind of new. I mean, usually PSAs or our press releases are separate. They're they're usually not incorporated into the friendliness of radio. So he brought up a couple of things with Blue Lake and then it kind of got our wheels turning. I'm like, oh, this is an option. I don't. We didn't find a lot of other options for P O, other than Katie saying she wanted to go door to door and knock and hand out flyers. We didn't really see much of that wider range of of voice being projected out there to the community for people coming to visit Trinidad, whether they're semi local, Kenneville, Fortuna, Rico, or or from afar. So Colin, we approached Colin that we asked him to come back and tell us a little more. You know, we we gave him some of the things that we are interested in as a city that we've been hearing over and over again. The dog thing kept coming up, coming up. You know, the busy time of the year here in Trinidad and how it how it can take a toll on our business community a lot too. So there was some, maybe some behavioral concepts in the message too that we could share with the overall public. But he had some good suggestions and and of course, there's a cost to this, you know, this is a, this is a media that we haven't really approached much from a city, but we're starting to find ourselves on the map even more. People are coming to town. How can we get the word out? And we've got some messages that we want to share. So I'll play for you just one thing that got my attention, I think, at the seventy three will play from Recology. And this has to do with don't text and drive. This is Linda Wise, you know, from Recology, who is wanting to do a message because she's seeing that her drivers are, you know, impacted, you know, the safety of dump truck driver, trash truck drivers are being impacted by people just distracted driving. So if you don't mind, I'll play this and then I'll play the one that they drawn up for Trinidad. And then what we're going to try to do is just test the larks, see what you guys think. See if it's something that you want to pursue. If you want staff to develop a little bit more, the cost is approximately $6,000. But we get, I think, six months worth of advertising, radio play every day, and we can always change and vary those messages depending on the season and what else is happening in Trinidad and what we want, what we want to convey. So.
And this is a side note in the packet, you also put in some information about.
Yeah, there's, it's a two, it's going to be a, it's a two part process and I'll explain that in just a second. Hopefully this is.
Your Gabe Adams sign. Superstitious.
So here, let me try, this is a Trinidad, I want to just, it went about right, but. And this was a draft that they did because they knew we were going to have a meeting and they were like, well, let's see if we can get you something in draft format to give you an idea of what. This could do, so I'll play this.
Hey, this is Colin from City Hall. We're thrilled to have you join us in Trinidad and the surrounding area. Our pristine beaches and vibrant community gave this truly special place. We want to ensure that everyone enjoys their time. So we kindly ask for your conscious effort to maintain the natural beauty and tradability of our town and beaches.
When you bring your furry friends to the beach, please keep them on a leash at all times. This helps ensure the safety of both your pet. And other beachgoers. Oh, we love dogs of all shapes and sizes. It's essential to manage aggressive dog behavior. People watch a eye on your pet to prevent any conflicts with other four-legged friends. Thank you for being responsible and considerate. Together, we can ensure that everything we visit to our beaches is memorable and enjoyable.
Okay, so. So the way they have this frame, beginning you heard, you know, one guy's voice, which is kind of opening and the closing. He referred to it as like a donut. The, the middle was the filling and that was their dog message. So that same opening and closing would be used perhaps, but we could. Choose to fill it with different things. And, and one of the things that Colin suggested was maybe at times. We can partner with another business, or if the businesses are interested in advertising, they can use that filler and then pay their own shit. You know, so maybe, maybe we don't want to play that eight times a day, ten times a day for six months straight. Uh, maybe we want to bury the message in. So basically the, the proposal from, from Colin is, is that, you know. Up from K K A is approximately six thousand dollars. You get quite a few messages. He has a whole calendar and it can run for six months. Um, and we can use it to, to say whatever we want, you know, whenever we need to. But, uh, this is, this is just, um, you know, the one thing that came to mind that, that we found could be an opportunity to reach a wider audience than just our. Local mailers or owners. This was, and we were just, we, we figured this would be a, a place to start. See if it's something you like, or, or maybe just like dump it and go, go a different direction.
You were saying if we could put, they'll run this message over and over again. We, well, are they willing to put different messages in that? That just wanted to not be any more money.
Well, the way, the way he got explained it again, and I, and I don't want to try to be a salesman for this because that's his job and that's a big, right? But he said that for six thousand dollars, we would get a big chunk and he put. The times per day for six months. It could be spread out if we didn't want to do it so many times. If we wanted to do it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and not Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The off-season, we want to do it less and the busy season, we want to do it more. We can get all those weeks. But, um, if other community groups, a land trust, a civic club, um. You, you know, but anyone else in the community, we gave them a long list of names, you know, that they might want to fill in. They can do all a part and he'll take care of all of them. You know, he'll say, oh, the civic club's got an event going on this weekend. Um, I'm going to approach the, you know, civic club members and. And I'll tell them if they want a piece of this, it'll cost X amount to do a two-week spot. And then they, they'll modify and do all the production in there. So the city's cost will be six thousand for its base. Now, six months. A place per day, however it plays out. And then they'll go and pound the pavement to see if anybody else wants to jump on the bandwagon. And that's where that donut comes. You know, the message of the beginning and the end, the opening and closing are more Trinidad generic, and then the filler is whatever happens to be now. And the city would be entitled to that.
Very interesting. Uh, you know, you listen to the radio, I don't. I'm wondering. Yeah, yeah, I know. I think it's a, a, a very creative, uh, suggestion. I'm just wondering who listens to the radio. And maybe my ignorance.
I'm sorry, I, I'm old. I like having, I like going into it, any community where I am and find the local radio. Right? The commercials make me laugh, the music makes me laugh, the DJs make me cry. And I, I'm thinking where we get a lot of our, our folks, right? Would, would Kika Thunder Country one oh one? K N S, I don't know.
It's on several stations.
Right, it's on several stations. I think the fact that it covers, I think, three stations. Alright, yeah, if you're doing nothing, nothing will change. If you do something.
Yeah, what Colin was saying too, and I, and I totally get it because I, I heard the Blue Lake cat and I had heard Recology and I've heard Public Works Tom Madison saying. You know, okay, celebrate all you want, people, but don't drink and drive. We want you to go home safe, you know? There's starting to be this little bit of a bandwagon and it's, it's creating a little sense of community. So a lot of people, when he's out selling his advertisements for, for, for his station, you know, he's. He's hearing people say, what do I get out of it? How is it going to drum up my business? And then he will say, well, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work, but a lot of people listen to radio and. And do you want to get on this public service? Do you want to be as part of the community? You know, I don't know. I had a business for a while, which I ran and I, I was shocked to see how many people would come in and say, I heard your radio. No, I don't. But maybe it's just a local.
Actually got time to manage this because we were talking about using different fillers, uh, over the six months.
That's a good question. I, Colin actually put together for us, and he didn't make a package for the gaming today, but, or maybe he did. I'm not sure. He put some like draft. Yeah, and I'm really impressed in how, how, how much, how motivated they are. You know, they're motivated to pound the pavement, to look for other things to fill, but they're also. Looking and also assisting us with different, different things that we might want. We could, I mean, at any given time, if something comes up, we can say, put it on the radio. You know, if something else happened, you know, we can develop.
I think it's interesting that the radio, I, I think about ads, I, when I'm watching TV, for instance, I have no idea if the ads are, they just jump to me. But on the radio, when, when I'm driving to my car, I listen to all the ads because I'm. Right in front of me, right? So I listen to, well, I cry, so. I pick up advertisements from the radio much better than I do any other source. So you, when you mentioned the ads, you were saying, you know, because. I'm listening to them, the radio on in the car.
And, and it's Colin that does the, so he's the one who's looking for the filling. Right?
Concepts.
Right.
They introduced that whole thing. We just had some very tear conversations with them. You know, like, hey, dogs, dogs are a priority for us.
That's, I'm sorry, as part of the merchant buy-in part, that's, I think that if you were asking about time, which is a really important question. About not just adding more to city staff without being thoughtful about it. It sounds like that company actually will do a lot of heavy lifting that side.
We have our public service messages, things that come up that we want to convey as a city to the community. We have access to this meeting. But he'll use that same format while he's out there in the community. So there might be commercials that sound similar, that have a similar opening and closing. Kind of offensive or more of a generic opening and closing, but then will be filled in with other community.
And I would imagine that a sort of a regular council agenda item is to, you know, is there something coming up that we need to? If we decide to do this, right? What does the council think? Like, what's our, what's our message for the next six months?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm a little bit, so, so, you know, putting my marketing hat on, I guess the question I would have. For them is, who's the audience? So like, who are their listeners today? Are they local folks primarily? Are they, you know, because any time you, you buy advertising, usually you get all the stats that'll tell you. Well, these are our listeners. They're in this demographic. Yeah, exactly. So. I would be curious about that. And, you know, it's just a question of are we reaching the right audience? Um, you know, part of it says, give it a try. Generally with marketing, you do something more, you do a little bit more multimodal, like, right? You'll say. Uh, you know, you'll do radio and you'll do print and, you know, et cetera. And we don't have a huge marketing budget, right? Like, we don't have one at all probably, so. You know, it seems to me like maybe doing, you know, giving it a try, you could see, you know, um, it could. Also, it's a little bit of a promotion for, I think, for Trinidad. You know, from the sound of it, it was like. It's, you know, this is a great place to come visit. We ask that you, you know, keep our beaches clean and. Don't like turn your dogs loose on us, but, you know, that, that part of it I really like.
Okay, add to that. Yeah, that's serious. We're, we're talking about different things, our costume. Think about some money. How is this spending budget? Are you just looking at this bigger kind of place?
Well, that's a good question. I, I mean, we, we generally get direction from the council. The council tells us they want to do something and then we go and figure out. And, and we keep hearing this recurring theme. What are you guys doing about the PR? What, what's happening on this level? So. You know, without spending days and weeks, you know, out there pursuing different options, this one came to us. And it came to us sort of in a cloak. We weren't quite looking for it. This is a while ago, so then it popped back up because we kept hearing. Hearing the council give us this, this energy saying, do something about this, figure this out. So this is just one proposal. I'm not sold on it. I love it. I'm, I'm, I appreciate it. I think it's good PR, like, like you said, for Trinidad and. Um, and I do believe in that whole community concept, but like I said, the analytics are for, I think, um. I think, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we're done looking. I think this one just happened to pop up and, and it came up as a. Week, next agenda item, get it on an agenda, so we're going to.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting. I think it's, you know, I agree with Katie. It's creative and, and, you know, it might be something that we want to do, maybe start with. You know, three months instead of six, if we can. I don't know if that's an option or.
Well, I, I think, um, having, you know, I don't know anything about marketing, so a multimodal approach. If, if we've got our webpage and we've got our mailer, we, we're already doing the mailer for general information. We, but now we have the digital version too, because a lot of people can subscribe to the webpage notifications. I know we have to build that up.
Yes.
But if we had, you know, PSAs or somewhere on the, I'm just looking at the main page here. There, there might be a way to reinforce it, right? I actually know some folks who. You know, when they're coming to visit Trinidad, they go to the city's website to see what's going on, right? I mean, I, I didn't know that was a thing. So if people are doing that, I think it's a, it's wise to, to reinforce what they might hear on the radio. What's on the webpage or just to get as, as many people as possible.
So we can even put the audio files on the webpage and, and you can, you know, could set it up with a little. And there's, uh, somebody had suggested that we have a, I guess it was, uh. Jack Tuttle, uh, councillor Tuttle was suggesting that we have like, uh, Trinidad Dogs part of the website. I was thinking maybe more like. Critter corner because some people have cats and they would get upset if we just focus on dogs. But anyway, but we could set up something like that. You have to let your cats off leash. It's getting late now. Alright, anyway, Jack, uh, West, I believe you were trying.
I think, I do say, I, I know I did always put on my little, I always looked at the websites, applying about fifty percent of worthless. To look at unless they are worthwhile, because, uh, you know, you're getting that, if you don't, they don't have easy bill of information. This would be a nice. Well, I, I'm very interested in this idea, um, but I'm also curious if maybe we should talk to the Chamber of Commerce, maybe bring, see what they think. Yeah, I might see some other sources that we can share a little bit, but.
And, and we can also do, but not a call, reverse donation. Meaning, you know, we give money to, uh, several groups to change for the museum, the library. If they want to participate, then they can spend some of that money.
Okay, I've got, I think I'm going to go to. Follow my voice. I think we're going to, uh, go to public comments on this topic. Please.
Hi, um, Rebecca Rotten, very, very, uh, I. Don't have a strong opinion about the radio, although my household is definitely radio listeners, but I just wanted to kind of also tie this back to the traveling calling thing, like. I feel like one of the donut pillars could be about how we want. Not just not aggressive dogs, but also like not aggressive drivers on our streets. Um, and I. I wanted to say this earlier when we were talking about that, but I do think the way that we present the town, like right off the bat. As a town that cares about our speed or off-leash dogs or whatever it is. Um, because right now we seem like a town that doesn't care about what our speed, uh, looks like. I mean, the. Twenty limit speed sign was covered by a tree for most of the time that I lived here. Um, and I think it recently got trimmed back, but, uh. I feel like if we send a message, like the multimodal approach, radio. Signage, right wing, getting off the highway, everyone gets off the highway from the homes.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. I like that idea, including the speeding as an issue. Anything else that comes our way?
So i- if, if we are in agreement, at least. Uh, what's next step?
Um, I, well, first of all, probably deliver. Positive feedback so far that we've received to Colin, and I'll ask him to maybe develop a few more. Content pieces for us to review. Um, there is a bit of identity, as you've noticed. Trinidad's identity is kind of framed in this and, you know, I think as much public input as possible is. Again, never a bad thing because, you know, chances are we might. OK their identity that they're putting out there, like Trinidad's beaches are this and warm and Trinidad's friendly. I think we can all agree that we need more. Positive e- energy, like Rebecca was just saying, like, hey. We feel like locals about this community, but, um, you know, there's not a lot of people here right now and maybe. You know, just, you never know. It's always somebody out there who's thinking, why didn't you say this? Don't, don't advertise anymore. We don't need any more, you know, or something to that.
And that could come up, that's true.
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, maybe another meeting, just follow up, maybe add a few, uh. Bullet points of the content that we like to convey, maybe ask Colin to. Develop that intro a little bit more, you know, maybe offer two suggestions. Uh, I hate the idea of having like a committee, but, uh, maybe, maybe like one or two people, like a s- small working committee can, can be developed. I mean, I, I'm happy to do it, uh, staff and I. Having participate, but I think having some other input. I know Betsy's over here like, yeah, okay. Um, but, uh, but, but the business community too, you know, they might be very concerned at what that message is. They might be more willing to buy in if they feel comfortable with what's being conveyed as opposed to. Not that we're trying to act as a little chamber, you know, as a, as a public chamber, because there is a chamber already. We're just sharing that donut, so to speak, because we have. Purchased for the city, its own message, and then there's room for other community members to, to get in on that, whether it's a business or a committee group. And then, again, it starts to form Trinidad's identity out there in the. So, uh, I, I'd say maybe develop a little bit more, possibly come back with some more content.
I think that sounds great and maybe we may want to broaden it, just talk about that and also anything else. You know, anything else that we're doing related to this, because, because there were some other things, like, you know, we tried the leash library idea that Jack Tuttle. Had suggested, we're going to do something on the website. Eli mentioned the signs and the. Contract with Animal Control. We, we might want to just kind of package up the whole thing, everything that we've done. And then this is a piece of ours. And it's kind of the umbrella of getting your message out, so.
And even like when I was mentioning some of those groups like the museum, I think it would be great to put the word out there. Uh, specifically like about what it has to offer, because I think a lot of people just don't realize. Yeah, the age of American history and, and, and the fact that they have, you know, the canoe that was done by acts of liquor there and so on. You know, and these are neat things that, uh, are for the benefit of the whole county, you know, that, that they can enjoy and appreciate. Uh, so I, I think it's great. And since we do have Betsy here, I would like to have her give us some of her input from a business. That's very valuable.
So, uh, this idea was brought to me about a week ago and I find it to be a very, um, interesting. That has been the, the, the main for natural here tonight. I agree. It's an interesting idea. Um, my background, uh, is of many things, sitting on the, the Zerbs Bureau. Or directors for Sonoma Valley, as they rebranded themselves from a snarky comment. About their neighbor, uh, to the east of the Napa Valley. And, um, you know, identifying who we are and deciding. Identifying who we are and deciding who we want to be. To our community within this borders, to our communities surrounding us. And the people that we invite into it is very important. That's a very important message. We don't want to be known as the most unfriendliest town in America. Um, that's not something I want to hear or. Um, be expressed, um, but it is really, um, it's interesting to hear his. His take on, in just a small, short amount of time. It sounds, it sounds really great. Um, and I can see where it could benefit us, but I think we do have to be on the same page, the community, the business community, who we are. Uh, and yeah, who we want to be. Any other question, Eli?
No, no, that's, that's true.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth pursuing, absolutely. But I would be happy, I, I agree, a committee. Made up of a few, uh, community members of varying backgrounds would be excellent. It's the only way you're gonna vet it, right?
Yeah, you're right. It's really about our brand, our identity, and how do we want to express that?
It is. And, you know, a few years ago, the Chamber did a really good job exploring Trinidad. But they had more, uh, financial resources then, and they had more community or brand, uh, business participation. Right now, they're really being held together by a couple of very busy, very strapped, uh, folks. So. You know, we also, it's about men at the end of the day for all of us, right? The city and, uh, and the chamber. And the chamber has really been a social. Organization over its years. I've sat on that board in the past. Um, but it, it isn't quite like a bureau, maybe, right? Um, it doesn't have that, quite the same legal authority, uh, to its membership.
Good sense. Thank you.
So maybe we could have this Trinidad City that cares. So we care about when you have your pet here, we care about the other pets that are around you. We care about the streets and make sure that, you know, people are safe. And, you know, not only our residents, but our visitors, you know, we, we just want to be a fun, happy place for everyone. We don't want to have tragedies here.
So this was just a proposal brought up by Colin. Um, Blue Lake, like I said, they, they created the template. Since you heard Recology had their own show, uh. Public Works does their own commercial. Uh, Blue Lake was a template for this comma, because Blue Lake as a city is trying to promote commerce. Whereas we're not necessarily trying to promote commerce. In fact, I think Jennifer, some of Jennifer's, uh. Uh, pavement pounding resulted in most of these businesses saying, we don't want to advertise this stuff. We're plenty busy already. So Trinidad can, you know, this is, this is something we can do in two different, two different ways. We can go alone, have our own message, have our own public service style, friendly. Develop messages, or the template could stand. As an opening and closing and Colin can use that as a way to go to other, we're not doing this. We're not the ones necessarily pounding pavements, seeing if other businesses want to get involved. It's out there. They can contact Colin if they decide they want to. But the message would be somewhat similar because it's a template. How they, how they produce. So that's why there would be some coordinations needed.
Yeah, that makes total sense. I think, um, it sounds like what we need to do, you know, folks, um, in general are very positive and supportive and we want to maybe look at it a little bit more, um. A little more information in our next meeting for, as part of the dog discussion, but also maybe more public safety to the point about the speeding and so forth. And, and then decide whether it's a city kind of brand. Community brand or community and business. It's all one, you know, that kind of thing. So there's some.
And encouraging the, the chamber to take this up, right? If we keep talking about the businesses, well.
Yeah.
There's the chamber, right? And perhaps the chamber can. Can weigh in on this, because this is a, a, a subsegment of, you know, it's a three radio stations. It's not, you know. Not a comprehensive plan, but it is something that's real. So plus, if we're gonna, if we're gonna match it with the webpage and the. Our own digital present. So perhaps another council meeting would bring someone like Colin and. The chamber together who's already had some time to kind of talk this through. So that it's more of a, uh, I don't know, comprehensive presentation.
And, uh. The, the other thing is, the timing is good because, uh, you know, like you said, we didn't want to. Get more businesses, you know, more people than, you know, because business are really busy in the summertime. So this is like the off-season. So in that sense, that would be good.
And during the busy time, they're coming anyway, so why not have a message of, of, you know, positivity and whatnot? I mean, it actually works, so.
And the other thing is, do we, the message from the radio, because if you look up there, you see that our audience is.
Well, on that note.
Can I, yeah. President about the leash law. And, uh.
We did that.
Yeah, it went out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, yeah, we, we did it. Yeah, and we told people about the leash law and everything, spilling everybody's.
One of the things that I, I don't think was covered is that people aren't reporting aggressive dogs.
And, and we did mention in there to, to report, uh, because we said that we wouldn't know unless you tell us.
Yeah.
Because we had that incident on Wagner Street where, uh, some of the neighbors knew, but the city never knew.
Did that go out in May? When did that go out?
It, yeah, right after that incident.
Yeah, and I'll double check to make sure. I think it's on the website on the animal control, under animal control, but well.
But there was like a lot of information in that one-page letter. So we, yeah, we should put at least some of that information on the website. Uh, but, uh, yeah, it's, uh. One of the advantages with this, I mean, yes, it is three stations, uh, which is good, but also the fact that. We haven't reached our residents, but a lot of these issues with dogs, you know, are coming from some outside of the area, especially specifically the fiddle thing. But, but to let the people outside the city know that this is something that we want to address.
Trinidad and slow down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so I'm gonna move us along to future agenda items. Are there any agenda items you want to, yeah?
I've got one. Um, so I've heard back from our community ambassador connected folks with the city of Arcata. And I've got interest from the city of Blue Lake, who responded about an hour, a couple hours ago. Um, so I'd like to, and I want to hear from the folks of Blue Lake, because. I think it would make a lot more sense to bring several cities in for training instead of just one, but we are gaining some ground. I know there's no one. Left on the screen, so I don't know why I'm looking up there, but I do want to, uh, bring that back as a future, future agenda item and so I'll work with Gabe and, and Eli and Cheryl on. When and what that looks like.
I'll go real quick. I just know I wanted to make sure we have the word out, share your proposals. We needed to get on the trails committee. I thought we were gonna do it this meeting, so this, could you make sure that gets out to the next? What, the, the next trail? She is not, she is not part of, yeah, officially part of it.
It's a year on your own.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Uh, so I don't know if this is the appropriate, it's being Vanwick Trail and the idea of, uh, Edwards. Trail, a sidewalk, a separation, whatever. It's feasible. I mean, we're hearing over and over again that, about these two items and. To make it a discussion item and get some. Action, actionable items. Process.
And so for Vanwick, we have to have an answer within six months, right? So. It may be a future agenda item, maybe not for next month yet, right? But, but what would we be waiting for?
What would be? But Edwards would be for next.
Yes.
But why, why would we wait on Vanwick?
Well, because we, we have to develop something to bring to the council.
Either permanently close it or permanently open it.
Yeah.
And to open it requires a massive amount of work and to close it also has permits and whatnot, so. It, it, both of them have a lot of background stuff to come up.
Which it, which is in the very.
Yeah, yeah, we, like I said, we had a meeting, uh, on Monday with the city engineer and the city planner and myself. The next week, we're meeting with the coastal commission, the Arcata staff. Uh, but after that, we, we want, you know, some of the ideas that the engineer could at least have something like, this is what could work, then we can bring it to the council.
That's a wrap.
I think so.